Thank you. And good morning. We're going to get started now. I understand that the state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, city council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and Illegal Intelligence prior to the meeting and can also be found on P H L council dot com. A now note, hours come, the clerk will please call the roll to take attendance and members that are in attendance will indicate that they are present or whatever they may choose to say to make sure that their image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues in the City of Philadelphia. I am present.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues in the City of Philadelphia. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Dom?
Morning, Council President and colleagues and Phillies.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gauthier?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues and good morning, Philadelphia. Present.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues and good morning, Philadelphia.
Morning, Councilwoman.
Councilman Green?
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Great to have this first council session of autism acceptance and awareness.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gem?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilman Heenan?
Good morning, Council President and good morning, colleagues.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Johnson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Calling for justice for all of our young people who lost their lives in the sense of gun violence.
Morning, Councilman.
Councilman Jones?
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, viewing public.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman O?
Good morning, Council Premier President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman O'Neil?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilwoman Parker?
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez?
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues, and thank you Reverend Bonnie for joining us this morning in prayer.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilman Scola? Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Present.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning, Councilmen.
Council President Clark?
Good morning. Good morning to all. We're going to get started today to give our invocation. The Chair recognizes the Reverend Bonnie Camrada at the Salvation Army. She is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez. I will ask all members and guests, please bow your head for the invocation.
You're on mute, Reverend Bonnie.
Good, thank you. I'm starting to let you know, God say he never changes. His work and eternal plan for mankind for us won't waver either. As believers, he compelled us to stand on his promises and lean not on our own understanding. Proverbs three five. He will be with each one of you as you lean in his promise and you make decisions for our city. Father, we just thank you because you are the center in our city. We believe that you can change sins. We believe that you have a plan even now for our city. Father, when we come to you and ask you to lift these violent challenges that we are having. The justice that needs to happen among our young people, the killing that doesn't make sense. You see it all, but we need help. And we ask you, Lord, to help us define how to really solve this issue. How do we get justice for our neighborhood? How do we bring peace, love to our neighborhood? Father, we just want to thank you because we know that we have promised that you are with us and that you don't leave us and forsake us. And we need to really that promise for the City of Philadelphia that you haven't left our city, that you are here and that you are here to change us and the city to be better. We just thank you, Lord, for the gift that you have given to each of this council person. The gift that you have bestowed on them for them to be able to rule our city with equity, justice, and love. And we send you all this in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend. We really appreciate you and we miss you. God bless.
We miss you. Thank you for being, for letting me allow me. Councilman Quinones Sanchez, thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal, the Meeting of Thursday, March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one, be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal, the Meeting of Thursday, March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one, stand approved. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If it was opposed, ayes have it, and our Journal was approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Members of Council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to Councilwoman. Our next order of business is communication. And, Mr. Decker, will you please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that you may have in your possession?
From the mayor to the President, the Members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to sections four, six oh four, and two, three oh seven of the Home Code Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers two one zero one five nine and two one zero one three five. And I am pleased to advise you that on March twenty nine, two thousand and twenty one, I signed the following bills, which were passed by Council at the session on March eighteen, two thousand and twenty one. Bill numbers two zero zero six two eight, two one zero zero seven five, two one zero one two two eight, and two one zero one six zero. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body. An ordinance authorizing the Commission of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease agreement with Chestnut Street Realty Limited Partnership for use by the City of a portion of the premises located at thirteen twenty seven through thirteen twenty nine Chestnut Street. And an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Commissioner to enter into a contract for the construction of a sewer and apartment work required to provide public sewer service in these sixteen hundred block of Olive Street. All under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including frivolous resolutions, be placed on the final passes calendar for the next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comments. So I want to thank you in advance for your anticipated cooperation. The clerk will please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by the Members.
Councilwoman Parker offers one bill and one resolution. A bill on behalf of the Council President entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Procurement Commissioner to Enter Into a Contract for the Construction of a Sewer and Appartement Work Required to Provide Public Sewer Service in the sixteen hundred block of Olive Street.
For the committee.
And a resolution authorizing, and on her own behalf, a resolution authorizing the Committee on Law and Government to hold hearings examining the decision to permanently move Sheriff's Sales online and further to explore the ramifications of and any unintended consequences that may arise from this decision.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on today, I am introducing a resolution that is sponsored by fifteen members of city council which authorizes the Committee on Law and Government to hold hearings examining the decision to permanently move Sheriff's Sales online and further to explore the ramifications of and any unintended consequences that may arise from this decision. For the benefit of the viewing public, Mr. President, I want them to know that Sheriff's Sales resumed virtually on Tuesday using a firm called Bid for Assets. And while the Sheriff's Office now says the move to virtual sales is in fact a pilot instead of a permanent move, the questions contained in the resolution remain. Those questions include, but are not limited to, how the contract with Bid for Assets came about and the terms of the contract. How will postponements and stays be communicated to bid for assets as necessary to avoid improper sales? How will the online sales process impact interested bidders with limited technological capabilities? How will online sales process impact local, non-professional bidders? How will bidders be made aware of what we know as the right of redemption for tax foreclosure sales and other post-sale rights of prior owners and occupants? And how can we ensure that Philadelphia is not flooded with out-of-city and out-of-state speculators? Now, Mr. President, the Sheriff's Office has said that the new system would increase the pace and profitability of Sheriff's Sales. And I know some may view that as a positive, but city council has the right to explore the other potentially negative side of the coin. Namely, just how much will the pace increase and whether the promise of increased profitability will actually benefit homeowners? I know my colleagues share my concern that if the process changes too much and just too quickly, that it could possibly accelerate and further exacerbate negative trends such as homeowner displacement, neighborhood instability, and a proliferation of investor-owned rental properties. The decision to take Sheriff's Sales virtual could have a much larger land use implications beyond just individual owners. And we need to understand just how this new system will impact both homeowners and the neighborhoods in which they live. Again, for the benefit of the viewing public, please note that this hearing is scheduled for April twenty first at one P M. Again, that's April twenty first at one P M. If anyone is interested in testifying at this hearing, I encourage you to reach out to Rachel Meadows in my office at two one five six eight six two zero six four. Again, that's two one five six eight six two zero six four. I thank you all, and I also want to note for the record that the City Council of Philadelphia found out about this virtual move many of us. I know this was the case in my instance in an article that was produced by W H Y Y. We were not a part of that decision-making. We were not consulted that it was actually happening. We have had many conversations with Sheriff Bilal, and I do want to thank her for the record. We tagged, phone tagged, and we teams, we had a meeting on Teams and communicated multiple times over the last few weeks about this issue. And I look forward to getting as many questions answered as possible when we have this hearing. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council, I believe Councilman Dom, did you have a word to say?
That's only on when my bill comes up, that's all.
Your bill, I'm sorry. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That will be on today's calendar. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers one resolution recognizing and supporting the health and wellness of black mamas and birthing people by acknowledging April eleventh through seventeen, two thousand and twenty one as Black Maternal Health Week.
Thank you. That will be on next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gem offers one resolution entitled a resolution urging the United States Senate to pass Senate Bill thirteen oh six, the Protecting the Right to Organize Act of two thousand and nineteen, also known as the PRO Act, and affirming the right of workers to form unions and organize for higher wages, family sustaining benefits, as well as safety, dignity, and respect at their workplace.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Heenan offers two bills entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commission of Public Property to Acquire Pre-Simple Title or a Lesser Real Estate Interest from Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land bordered by Richmond Street to the northwest, we chief to the east, northeast, I ninety-five to the west, and the northeast treatment plant to the southeast for water treatment or supply purposes.
For the committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commission of Public Property to Acquire Pre-Simple Title or a Lesser Interest in Real Estate by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation, agreement in lieu of condemnation or otherwise in parcels of land along the Delaware River and the Taconi-Holmesburg section of the Delaware River Trail.
For the committee.
Councilman Jones offers two resolutions. And titled a resolution recognizing and honoring James Harry Columbia for his exceptional service to the Roxboro community as the Executive Director of the Roxboro Development Corporation.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Keir Bradford Gray for her outstanding, impactful, and incomparable service to the city and its citizens as chief defender of the Defender Association of Philadelphia and congratulating her on her new role as partner at Montgomery, McCracken, Walker, and Rhodes.
Next, Mcgillen.
Councilman Johnson offers one resolution calling upon the United States Congress to support the Biden Administration's American Jobs Plan, a multi-trillion-dollar plan to invest in American infrastructure and jobs over the next eight years.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Green offers three resolutions entitled a resolution recognizing April two thousand and twenty one as Autism Acceptance and Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia and commending the Eagles Autism Foundation and Divine Providence Village for their vaccination initiative.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing and congratulating Gail Harity for her twenty-four years of dedicated, effective, and transformative leadership as President and Chief Operating Officer of the Philadelphia Museum of Art.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing and celebrating mental health partnerships on the seventieth anniversary of the organization's founding.
Also on next week's calendar.
Councilman Dom offers three bills entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter nineteen twenty-six hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes by Changing the Manner of Imposition.
For the committee.
And an ordinance amending chapter nineteen twenty-six hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes by Revising Certain Tax Rates.
For the committee.
And an ordinance amending chapter nineteen fifteen hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by Revising Certain Tax Rates.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom. That bill is referred to committee. Councilman Dom?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a few remarks today about the detachment of the form legislative package I'm introducing as we plan for the upcoming budget conversations. Our city faces a challenging, unique moment in time. We can use this moment to keep you down the same path we've been on, or we can take bold actions to help change the trajectory of Philadelphia. In proposing these three bills today, I hope to start a much-needed and important conversation about reopening our economy and about how we grow into the future. This includes creating more family-sustaining jobs for residents, helping our small and medium-sized businesses, and overall how we make Philadelphia an attractive place to live, work, and do business. Now's the time to examine what's working and what's not working. We need to explore how we get the desired results we all want and need for Philadelphia. This crisis is an opportunity for change and tax reform that can restart our economy and benefit our residents and businesses for years to come into the future. Our present crisis will not allow us to continue to tolerate having one of the highest tax burdens among the largest U.S. cities while having the lowest employment rate per one thousand residents. We need to create an attractive environment for businesses, workers, and families to grow here and locate here. This is especially true for all those small and mid-sized businesses that are already here and have been deeply affected by the pandemic. They are our backbone. They've been loyal to our city. And we appreciate each and every business in our city that has stayed despite the many forces working against them. This pandemic has highlighted, if not magnified, the difficulties that come with bringing back demand to the city. Every business is faced with staying and paying complicated and higher tax rates or moving sometimes across the street and paying less. In a post-pandemic world, and as technology continues to advance, the ease of working anywhere will only become more prevalent. And if we continue to tax what moves, which is people and their jobs, the more volatile our tax base will become. We have to have a serious conversation about the precarious situation we find ourselves in this year and what it means for the future of Philadelphia. When you can live and work anywhere, we need to compete for demand in Philadelphia. Philadelphia must become more competitive in the region and across major U.S. cities by attracting people and fostering job growth. That is why a part of my tax reform package includes lowering the wage tax rates for residents and non-residents at a faster pace than previously proposed. The rest of the tax package addresses what my colleagues and I have heard in several council hearings over the last several years from experts around the country. We have heard that we are the only city in the United States that taxes net income and gross receipts. And we've also heard that of the top twenty cities in the United States, we have the second-highest corporate income tax rate for companies. New York is number one at seventeen point two percent, and Philadelphia is number two at sixteen point two percent, while the other eighteen cities are all below the ten percent threshold. And if you haven't seen it yet, SEPTA is committing capital to a light rail system to King of Prussia. If we do not see this as a potential threat to our competitiveness in the region and future job growth for our city, then we're not paying attention. These next two bills address those issues by reducing the tax burden to allow businesses to pay the higher of either the net income or gross receipts portion of the business income and receipts tax. This will eliminate the requirement to pay both and places on a more level playing field compared to the other cities in the United States. And lastly, the proposed reform package reduces the net income portion of the business income and receipts tax, the tax at sixteen point two, by more than half over the next ten years, again, to ensure our competitiveness among U.S. cities and within the region. I think we can expand our tax base faster if we start thinking with a job-growth mindset. And given the stimulus packages we're seeing from President Biden's administration, I am hopeful that with all of these things working together in tandem, we can all achieve our goals. As we move forward in these discussions, I hope we all consider and appreciate our need to be more competitive. Philadelphia isn't an island, and people and businesses have more choices than ever before. Competition has never been greater than right now, and we can do this. The current budget, which has increased by a billion dollars over the last five years, has made minimal investment in our tax structure in order to expand our tax base. In a hearing last week, we saw and heard that for this increase in spending, we weren't made safer and we made no meaningful dent in the level of poverty for Philadelphia. I'd like to explore with all of you how we take revenue growth and dedicate funds to Philadelphia's Poverty Fund and Violence Prevention Programs to continue to tackle these primary issues in our city. The goal of these bills is to create an open dialogue and start thinking outside the box to reform our tax structure. I plan to engage everyone in this conversation, and it's important that we take this rare opportunity to think about what we do in order to alter the city's current trajectory. This is a moment in time. It's an opportunity for us to reopen our economy with a pro-jobs tax program that will create a stronger economic taxpaying base for the future of our city, which will generate the funds we need and help our residents climb out of poverty and fund violence prevention programs we desperately need. I look forward to working with all of you as we move this discussion forward. Thank you for your time, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Said earlier, all those bills will be referred to the appropriate committee. Mr. Decker?
Please proceed. Yes, Mr. President. Councilman Thomas offers two resolutions entitled a resolution calling on the Pennsylvania State Senate and House of Representatives to grant Philadelphia the ability to provide needed regulatory relief to local bars, restaurants, and other liquor licensees. Regulatory relief in the form of extended bar hours and increased happy hours will allow establishments hit hard by state and local coronavirus-related closures and capacity restrictions to make a full recovery and preserve thousands of local jobs. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to put an emphasis on the bill. Right now, we're in a space and time where we are really trying to reimagine what the new normal would look like as we hopefully are at the tail end of this coronavirus crisis. And so we are going to be strong advocates as it relates to collaborating, partnering, and also demanding from our state to have a few more options as it relates to what we can do and how we can support businesses here in the City of Philadelphia. So thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues who co-sponsored this legislation, and I look forward to some action from our state legislature. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Thomas also offers a resolution honoring and congratulating the West Catholic Preparatory High School Girls Basketball Team, the Lady Birds, on winning the school's first-ever P I double A state title against Mohawk with a sixty-seven to fifty-six victory.
That will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman O'Neil offers seven bills. And titled An Ordinance Establishing No Truck Parking and Toll-Away Zone Regulations on Haldeman Avenue, both sides from Clark Street to Redline Road. And an ordinance establishing no truck parking and toll-away zone regulations on Tomlinson Road, both sides from Busselton Avenue to Lindsay Street. And an ordinance establishing no truck parking and toll-away zone regulations on Brookmont Road, both sides from Ferndale Street to Medway Road. And an ordinance establishing no truck parking and toll-away zone regulations on Bridle Road, both sides from Brookmont Road to Bartlett Street. And an ordinance establishing no truck parking and toll-away zone regulations on Chesworth Road, both sides from Bure, from Burey Road to Fern, Ferndale Street. And an ordinance establishing no truck parking and toll-away zone regulations on Ferndale Street, both sides from Jean Street to Redline Road. And an ordinance establishing no truck parking and toll-ways zone regulations on Greymont Street, both sides from Jean Street to Ferndale Street.
Thank you. Those seven bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilman Scola offers two bills and two resolutions entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commission of Public Property to enter into a sublease agreement with Chestnut Street Realty Partners Limited Partnership for use by the City of a portion of the premises located at thirteen twenty seven through thirteen twenty nine Chestnut Street.
For the committee.
And an ordinance amending Title nine of the Philadelphia Code by amending section nine two oh three related to street vendors by prohibiting street vending on certain portions of East Passing Up Avenue and surrounding areas.
For the committee.
And a resolution to bring to Philadelphia the main celebrations of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversaries of the Navy and Marine Corps.
Be on next week's calendar.
And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as eighteen twenty-four East Huntington Street.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Bass offers four resolutions entitled A Resolution Authorizing the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to Hold Hearings on the City of Philadelphia's Landmarks and Monuments Review Process to Propose Changes to Any Landmarks or Monuments in Philadelphia That Are Reminders or Symbols of Racism- in Philadelphia that are reminders or symbols of racism or bigotry while elevating the city's rich history and diversity.
Next week's calendar. I'm sorry, this week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council to hold hearings on the lack of diversity and inclusion on corporate boards in Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing April 24, 2021, as the 20th National Prescription Drug Takeback Day to provide a safe and effective option for the disposal of unwanted, unused, or expired controlled substances, and to minimize the incidence of drug abuse and fatal overdoses in the city due to non-medical prescription drugs found in the homes of family and friends.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvement thereon situated in the 8th Councilman district.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman O offers four resolutions entitled a resolution calling on the School District of Philadelphia to help combat anti-Asian hate by providing Asian-American history lessons during Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month in May to further educate and inform students of the rich history and contributions of Asian-Americans.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Dr. Carmen Fibo on the longtime executive director of Taller Boterequino Incorporated on the occasion of her upcoming retirement.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Paul S. Beedman, the longtime president and CEO of Avenue of the Arts Incorporated for his years of service in strengthening Philadelphia's internationally recognized arts and culture scene upon the occasion of his upcoming retirement.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing QFlix Philadelphia, the largest LGBTQ-plus film festival in the Mid-Atlantic region, and its parent organization, QFlix USA, and calling on Facebook to unlock the organization's QFlix Worcester account.
Also on the next week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered by the members today, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions by the members, and our next order of business is reports on committee, and the chair recognizes Councilman Green for report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 210139.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Please read.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Council President. I went too early. I meant to say the following statement. Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Finance reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
We got you. We figured it. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and the members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Finance, which is referred Bill Number 210139, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 19500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Taxes and Rents General by adding required conditions and information for reporting adjustments to taxable income. Respectful reports that as considered the same, I returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
All right, thank you. I'll say it again. Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 210139.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 210139. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Aye as had. This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker for report from the Committee on Labor and Civil Service.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Labor and Civil Service reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Labor and Civil Service, to which is referred Bill Number 200625, entitled an ordinance amending Title IX of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding a new chapter, 94700, to prohibit employers from requiring prospective employees to undergo testing for the presence of marijuana as a condition of employment. Respectful reports that as considered and amended the same, I returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 200625. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 200625. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Aye as had. And this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our consideration of the council. I note that the bill just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading, and these bills will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar today. They are resolution numbers 210251, 210253, 210254, 210255, 256, 210258, 210259, 210260, 210261, 210262, 210263, 210264, 210265, 210266, 210268, 210270, 210271, 210272, and 210273. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by Councilwoman Parker. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed.
Aye.
Aye as had. Most who carry it consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. The chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 210267, 210078, 210079, 210001, 210002, 210118, 210119, 210135, 210136, 210178, 210179, 210180, and 210137. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the consideration of our public comment, we're going to take a brief five to 10-minute break to allow our technology professionals to tee everyone up for the speaker we have today's meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now that everyone is connected to the public meeting, and before considering resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider the public comment, and we'll go as follows. Public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendars for possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 p.m. the day before the session to sign up for the public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation, and add you to our list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting, and under ideal circumstances, they will each have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today's time limit, we have, I think we can do three minutes. We want to do three minutes today. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. So, once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony, and when there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, you will be reminded of this. Once your allotted time has passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks, and shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. I also reserve the right to limit the number of speakers where repetitious comments are being made on the same matter, and to limit the scope of the testimony to only certain items on the agenda during the emergency, which could affect callbacks and the public comment at the meeting. So, please be aware that this public meeting is also being recorded because the meeting is public. Participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy, so by continuing to be in this meeting, you are considered to be recorded. I would now ask that the chief clerk, please read the name of our first speaker.
Anna Martinez Donate, commenting on 210273.
Good morning. State your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Hello, good morning. My name is Anna Martinez Donate, and I am a professor at the Dorncite School of Public Health at Drexel University, and I am also the lead convener of the Latino Health Collective.
Please proceed.
I'm here to support Councilmember Bass's resolution 2010273. And I would like to use this time to highlight some of the health issues that have disproportionate impact on the health of Latino communities in Philadelphia and that need to be addressed to promote their health. Latinos represent 15% of the overall population in our city and a very diverse community. About 61% are from Puerto Rico, while 21% are from Mexico, Central America, and South America. Latinos are afflicted by a myriad of social determinants of health. This population has the highest rates of poverty and unemployment in our city. They also face numerous barriers to healthcare services because they have the lowest rate of health insurance. They are more likely to live in areas with higher levels of social vulnerability, especially in the northeast and south Philadelphia areas, and these are often areas that experience higher levels of poverty and crime access to services. Furthermore, one in five Latinos in our city is fallen, and among the fallen, two-thirds are non-citizens. Also, importantly, they are free to access services. Not surprisingly, given these factors, Latinos have worse self-reported health than any other group in Philadelphia. They are overrepresented among new cases of HIV, opioid-related deaths, depression, and homicide mortality. And these are endemic issues or interrelated epidemics that are driven by common social, economic, and political factors such as poverty, unemployment, discrimination, and immigration status. The recent pandemic has exposed the impact of these social disadvantages on Latino communities. Latinos in Philadelphia have experienced the second-highest rate of infection with COVID-19, second only after African-Americans, and their hospitalization and mortality rates are two to four times greater compared to non-Hispanic whites. Latinos have experienced persistent barriers to testing and vaccination for COVID. For example, only 16% of Latinos have received those of COVID-19 vaccination compared to 32% of non-Hispanic whites. But despite these challenges, Latinos are a very resilient community who contributes immensely to our city. They are owners to close to 20,000 businesses in the greater Philadelphia area, and about a third of them work as essential workers. During this pandemic, our city has relied on many of our Latino residents to produce, prepare, pack, and deliver the foods we consume, to take care of our children, to sanitize our homes and workplaces. The health disparities affecting Latinos in Philadelphia need your urgent attention and support. It is imperative to direct efforts and resources to address the social, economic, and political factors behind this inequity. The city must act to increase education and economic opportunities, expand access to health and human services, and enhance the ability of Latinos and Latinas to thrive in our city. Investments in the health of well-being of Latinos will make us all stronger and benefit our city as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Amy Carroll Scott, commenting on 210273.
Good morning. State your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony. Ms. Ms. Carol Scott? Ms. Scott? Are you connected? Mr. Decker, go on to the next person.
Hello, this is Amy.
Oh, you got it. Okay. Yeah, just state your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Okay, great. My name is Dr. Amy Carroll Scott, and I'm an associate professor at the Drexel Dorncite School of Public Health. I'm also a longtime member and leader in the American Public Health Association, and so I'm deeply involved in that organization's work to translate national public health priorities into local action to improve health in communities. And so I would like to express my support for Councilwoman Bass's resolution number 210273, as I think- 210-273, as I think there's no better time to shine the spotlight of National Public Health Week on public health issues locally. The global COVID-19 pandemic and the co-occurring epidemic of gun violence has further revealed the gaps in our public health systems to respond to such threats to the health of all Philadelphians and in particular to Black Indigenous and other populations of color. But of course, this has not been a surprise. We've long known that social and economic characteristics put individuals, populations, and geographically defined communities at higher or lower risk of poor health outcomes. These are what we call the social determinants of health, and they include factors like poverty, unemployment, systemic racism, and living in an economically excluded or disinvested area. In fact, research continues to confirm that these factors determine about 80% of our health status and are more important than such factors as heredity and medical treatment. I say all this to emphasize the point that the way to achieve health equity in Philadelphia is to invest in the infrastructure needed for communities to better understand and create solutions that make sense within the history, culture, values, and health priorities of each community. As elected officials, city agency leaders, and research partners, we should use opportunities like National Public Health Week and its focus on building better bridges to better health, and this resolution's focus on highlighting issues to building healthier communities to work collectively to advocate for investments in our national, state, and city public health infrastructure. But I want to emphasize an important piece of this is to also consider community systems as an essential, if not the most essential component of this infrastructure requiring investment. This means investment in community-based and faith-based organizations already serving their communities, workforce development to ensure there's a pipeline to public health jobs in these communities, and reexamining city systems to ensure they're equitably serving our most vulnerable communities and not restigmatizing them. And so it's for this reason that I'm in strong support of this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Maria Lazo, commenting on 210-273.
Hello.
Good morning. Just state your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Hi, good morning. My name is Maria Lazo, and I am professor at the Doron Side School of Public Health, Drexel University, and I have expertise in epidemiology, public health, and Latino health disparities. I am a Latina immigrant myself, and it is an honor for me to participate on this hearing today on behalf of the Latino community in Philadelphia, especially the immigrant community. Latinos represent around 15% of the population in Philadelphia. One in five Latinos are immigrants and were born outside of the U.S. The majority of Latinos have Puerto Rican ancestry, but there is a sizable number of Latinos with Dominican, Mexican, and Central American ancestry. Since the early days of the pandemic, we have observed pronounced inequities in COVID-19 testing cases, hospitalization, and mortality in Philadelphia. In every age group, hospitalization and mortality rates have been highest among Latinos and Blacks. Some of these disparities are the result of higher risk of exposure to the virus among Latinos. Here in Philadelphia, 32% of Latino workers are employed in essential occupations. Latino immigrants are disproportionately employed in jobs with more hazardous conditions such as janitorial services and domestic labor. Furthermore, around 37% of Latinos in Philadelphia live in poverty compared to 15% of whites. Latinos have had very limited access to relief funds or unemployment insurance, and therefore they have experienced greater pressure to continue to work. The other important source of disparities is related to increased vulnerability. Underlying social conditions lead to a concentration of biological risk factors and social determinants of health that hinder the ability of the Latino community to offer the impact. Language, citizenship status, and immigration laws greatly limit access to healthcare among Latinos and especially Latino immigrants. Latinos have lower insurance rates and are much less likely to have primary care providers and often forgo care due to the cost or fear of deportation. Multiple efforts and initiatives have been implemented by PhilA in Philadelphia in order to reduce the impact of COVID-19 and the disparities on Latinos and other minorities. The Philadelphia Department of Public Health, in concert with all their governmental departments, Latino-serving organizations, and academic partners, including also Drexel, have embarked on significant efforts to address these disparities, and we are very thankful for that. To conclude, the health disparities affecting Latinos in Philadelphia need urgent attention and support. It is imperative to direct efforts and resources to address social, economic, political factors behind these inequities. The city must act to increase economic opportunities and expand access to health and human services and to ultimately enhance the ability of Latinos and Latinas to thrive in our city. Investments in the health and well-being of Latinos, a group that has experienced some of the worst health outcomes in Philadelphia but that is essential for the economy of the citizens, will make us stronger and benefit our city as a whole. I fully support this resolution put forward by Councilmember Bass to celebrate public health, highlight critical public health issues, and thank public health workers.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ryan Boyer, commenting on 210-253.
Good morning. State your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Mr. Boyer?
Hello?
Yes, just state your name for the record. Proceed with your testimony.
Ryan N. Boyer.
Please proceed.
Oh, yes. Good morning. My name is Ryan N. Boyer. I'm the business manager of Labor's District Council of Philadelphia Vicinity. We are a union of over 6,000 construction, factory, public sector, and maintenance workers throughout the five-county region of Philadelphia. I'm here to comment on resolution number 210-253. I want to express my sincere thanks to Councilwoman Sherrell Parker and her colleagues for introducing this great resolution for my brother and friend Esteban Vera Jr., who was the first Latino person to serve on Septus Board of Directors. This is very important that we recognize the diversity and inclusion that's happening in our region and in our city, and the fact that City Council, this august body, is representing such a great human being of Philadelphia for his total life, a veteran of the United States Army, Esteban Vera Jr., it gives me pride to be a part of the same organization that Esteban is a part of. Esteban is hardworking. He has spent his life building coalitions and creating opportunities for people that hasn't had opportunities before. I am, I am so proud and happy that you're doing this today, and my respect has only risen by this great, great citation and resolution. Thank the Philadelphia City Council and congratulations to Esteban Vera on your very great accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Esteban Vera Jr.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system, 21543.
Okay. Good morning. Are you, are you here with us? Modesto, you not get a pickup?
We're not able to contact Esteban Vera Jr., Council President.
All right, well, Mr. Boyer said a whole lot about him, and we concur that he's a very, very awesome person, a great, great labor leader and a human being. He's done a lot of things, not only for the city but for the country. So I think that's our last speaker, Mr. Decker.
It is, Mr. President.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Unfortunately, we can't see him up. Okay, uh, that concludes our public comment for the day. We'll now consider today's resolution on the consent agenda.
I would ask, uh, Mr. Decker, uh, to read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular final passage calendar. Uh, the clerk will now read the titles of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda.
Resolution number 210-251, entitled the resolution recognizing March 31, 2021 as International Transgender Day of Visibility, to celebrate transgender and gender nonconforming people around the world, raise awareness about the unique struggles and discrimination they face, and honor their resilience and success. And resolution number 210-253, entitled the resolution congratulating Esteban Vera Jr. on his appointment to Septus Board of Directors, making him the first Latino person to serve as the transit agency's governing, serve on the transit agency's governing body. And resolution number 210-254, entitled the resolution recognizing and congratulating Marcia L. Fudge on her confirmation to lead the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And resolution number 210-255, entitled the resolution recognizing Philly Tech Sisters on their work to diversify the tech scene in Philadelphia, with special acknowledgement to Ashley Turner for leading the group and her dedication to this effort. And resolution number 210-256, entitled the resolution celebrating the selection of Jericho Brown's Pulitzer Prize-winning collection of poems, "The Tradition," for the 2021 One Book, One Philadelphia program. And resolution number 210-258, entitled the resolution honoring the 150th anniversary of the Philadelphia Fire Department. Resolution number 210-259, entitled the resolution honoring the 250th anniversary of the Society of the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick. And resolution number 210-260, entitled the resolution honoring and recognizing Fred Jenkins Sr. for his work as a boxing coach and youth mentor and his retirement from Philadelphia's Parks and Recreation after 45 years of service. And resolution number 210-261, entitled the resolution honoring and congratulating Diana C. Bedley on the occasion of her retirement following 25 years of relentless dedication and service to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And resolution number 210-262, entitled the resolution recognizing and honoring Herb Douglas, the oldest living African-American Olympic medalist, for his many life achievements on and off the track. And resolution number 210-263, entitled the resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority these conveying fees, simple title, to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the Second Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank, fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16405 of the Philadelphia Code. And resolution number 210-264, entitled the resolution honoring the life and legacy of Charlie "Uncle" Biff Bernard, Dean of the Philadelphia Democratic Party, Political Director, Chief Moral Officer, and the grandfather of the Philadelphia Democratic City Committee for his lifelong dedication to Philadelphia politics. And resolution number 210-265, entitled the resolution calling all social media companies to take a proactive role in fighting the gun violence epidemic nationwide by monitoring and removing inciting posts off platforms such as Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter. And resolution number 210-266, entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2001 North Orianna Street located in the 7th Councilmatic District. And resolution number 210-268, entitled the resolution honoring and congratulating Deb Halen on the occasion of her becoming the 54th United States Secretary of the Interior and the first Native American woman to lead a cabinet-level department, particularly one that is existential for Native tribes and people. And resolution number 210-270, entitled the resolution honoring and congratulating Philadelphia's 2021 National Merit Scholarship Competition Program semifinalists. Thirty-eight students from nine of Philadelphia schools were named as semifinalists in the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Competition Program, demonstrating a strong commitment to academic excellence. And resolution number 210-271, entitled the resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority these conveying fees, simple title, to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the First Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank, fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16405 of the Philadelphia Code. And resolution number 210-272, entitled the resolution recognizing April 6, 2021 as National Library Workers' Day, to honor the commitment of library workers and the unique services they provide to local communities and to support greater compensation and equality in libraries. And resolution number 210-273, entitled the resolution recognizing the week of April 5, 2021 to April 11, 2021 as National Public Health Week to celebrate public health, highlight issues critical to building healthier communities, and thank public health workers during an especially unique year due to the COVID-19 pandemic, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 If opposed, ayes have it, and each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been adopted. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of resolution number 210-267?
A resolution recognizing and honoring the Philadelphia Children's Alliance and the Philadelphia Department of Human Services for their collaborative commitment to bring healing and justice to victims of child sexual abuse in Philadelphia and declaring April 2021, 2021 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clarina Sanchez for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. Before I motion for this resolution, I just want to thank all of my colleagues who over the last few years have been incredibly supportive of the Philadelphia Children's Alliance's work. They have been recognized as one of the leading national standards and models of support to children, so I want to take this opportunity to thank them. I know in this political reality, we don't get an opportunity to bring in some of these groups who are doing tremendous work during these very challenging times. I particularly want to thank their partners, the Philadelphia Department of Human Services, the Philadelphia Community Special Victims Unit, the District Attorney's Office, Children's Hospital, and St. Christopher's Hospital. Even during the pandemic, they did not close. They were available to our families and to our children in some of the most critical times. Unfortunately, during the pandemic, as we've seen in other cases, there's been an uptick in cases. I want to thank my colleagues in council, in particular the Committee on Children and Youth, who I know work aggressively and proactively on all these issues, including the Juvenile Anti-Human Campaign Coalition, who has had some success in breaking down some of the challenges that we have experienced in the city. So thanks again to all my council colleagues. We are proud to host them in the 7th Councilmatic District, and as we celebrate and declare, not celebrate actually, as we declare, uh, Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I look forward to their participation as we talk about investing in young people and prevention and changing the challenges that we face as a city. I want to thank SISler Media and all its team for reminding us that throughout the pandemic, people have faced incredible challenges, but we have a team of experts who have made themselves available. Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably seconded the resolution be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 210-078.
An ordinance, titled 14 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Zoning and Planning, by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clarina Sanchez for an amendment to bill number 210-078.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to thank all of my colleagues who worked with us in putting this bill forward and the amendments that have been circulated today to the rest of the colleagues. I would like to offer an official amendment with bill number 210078, which has been circulated to all members, and I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. If opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 210078.
An ordinance authorizing the Philadelphia Municipal Authority and the Philadelphia Gas Works by Philadelphia Facilities Managing Corporation solely in its capacity as operator and manager of the City solely in its capacity as operator and manager of the city-owned Philadelphia Gas Works to enter into certain transactions and contracts regarding the lease and license of portions of the premises located at five thousand Somerdale Avenue and fifty-five oh one Whittaker Avenue for the use of Philadelphia Gas Works.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of all members have been voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two one zero 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 one.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Dexter Street and La Creme Avenue and Green Lane, Baker Street and Leverton Avenue, Apple Street and Scher's Lane, Own Street and Markle Street and Roxboro Avenue, Connor Road Street and Peckin Street, and Mitchell Street.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes. Ayes are seventeen, ayes are zero. Majority of all members present, voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill number two one zero 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 two.
An ordinance amending section two of an ordinance, Bill number one four zero nine zero two, approved March fourth, two thousand fifteen, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines of Graze on a Portion of City Plan Numbers Two Twenty Four and Two Thirty Two" by striking from the city plan in Vacatica Yuga Street from Whittaker Avenue towards terminus eastwardly therefrom by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of all members present, voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill number two one zero one one eight.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Mantham Street and South Eighteenth Street and South Sixteenth Street and South Twenty-first Streets, South Twentieth Street and Ellsworth Street, Carlisle Street and Wharton Street and Tasker Street, Titan Street and South Sixteenth Street and South Eighteenth Street.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of all members present, voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill number two one zero one one nine.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of South Fifteenth Street and Reed Street, South Nineteenth Street and Reed Street, South Eighteenth Street and Federal Street, South Eighteenth Street and Moore Street, Wharton Street and South Twenty-second and South Seventeenth Street, Ellsworth Street and South Twenty-second Street, Moore Street and South Seventeenth Street.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of all members present, voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, Bill number two one zero one thirty-five.
An ordinance amending chapter nine two oh eight of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Cafes and Title four, Subcode A of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Use Registration Permits by adding new provisions allowing restaurants applying for a sidewalk cafe permit or temporary lot uses permit to allow outdoor entertainment.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for an amendment to Bill number two one zero one thirty-five.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill number two one zero one thirty-five. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, the most will signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number two one zero one thirty-five has been amended and Bill number two one zero one thirty-five as amended will be placed on our final passage calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two one zero one thirty-six.
An ordinance authorizing the Procurement Commissioner to enter into a contract for the construction of a sewer and a pertinent work required to provide public sewer service in unit block of Ozmore Street.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of all members present, voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill number two one zero one seventy-eight.
An ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on both sides of Frontenac Street from Lebec Street to Deveraux Avenue.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of all members present, voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill number two one zero one seventy-nine.
An ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on Hammond Avenue between East Nidro Avenue and Crescentville Road.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of all members present, voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, two one zero one eight oh.
An ordinance amending section nine two thirteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Markets by adding a permissible location.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question is now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of all members present, voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of one, I'm sorry, two one zero one three seven.
An ordinance amending Title twenty-two of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Employees Retirement Code by creating an early retirement program for certain employees working in or with the Department of Commerce Aviation Division.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of all members present, voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Long Government to hold hearings examining the decision to permanently move Sheriff Sales online and further to explore the ramifications of and any unintended consequences that may arise from this decision introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to hold hearings on the city of Philadelphia's landmarks and monuments review process to propose changes to any landmarks or monuments in Philadelphia that are reminders or symbols of racism or bigotry while elevating the city's rich history and diversity introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
It has been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council to hold hearings on the lack of diversity and inclusion on corporate boards in Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That completes our calendar for today. Proud to recognizing members regarding speeches I will note for the record at this time will be used the chat feature available in Microsoft's team to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply, the Snapchat the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. That said, features on behalf of the minority. There appears to be none. Speech on the behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes.
Mr. President. President, the Councilmember O is in a box.
Oh, okay. Just popped up. Thank you. I'm on delay over here. I gotta check that out. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Majority Leader. I actually just did that. I was a little late there. But I just wanted to recognize the film in Philadelphia, Concrete Cowboy. You know, directed by Ricky Staub right here in Philadelphia. A lot of the folks at Fletcher Street Stables, the Philadelphia Riding Academy are actually featured in the film. And of course, we just gave a resolution. We passed it for Michael OG Law to bond for his work. You know, love over hate, education over incarceration, all he does to fight gun violence. Wow, what a great job he did acting. He was menacing. It really came through the screen. So, you know, all good stuff and really appreciate, you know, what film does to educate people about our history, our culture, our diversity. I learned a few things and I hope everybody will watch and support the film. It's on Netflix, so please check it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I must say that on the personal note, I'm a little excited about the film because the house that the horse lived in is on the block that I grew up on.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, my little brother, he got wind of it. He sent me a text and said, yes, Mr. Emma's house is in the movie, right? And that was the lady's name in the house. Yeah. Pretty significant. Thank you, Councilman. Speeches on behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of things. I want to try to be brief. First, I want to start by thanking the Arts and Culture Task Force for the resolution that was introduced earlier today for their great work.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of things. I want to try to be brief. First, I want to start by thanking the Arts and Culture Task Force for the resolution that was introduced earlier today for their great work. I'm looking forward to working with them more as it relates to recommendations that came out of the Arts and Culture Task Force report that was circulated through council. I'm also looking forward to Arts and Culture Recovery Week this summer as we really want folks to know that Philadelphia is open for business. I also want to take a minute to thank my council member and council member Parker and our leader here as it relates to our team on council, one of our leaders as it relates to our team on council, for the work that's being done with the Sheriff's Sale. I like other members of council are extremely concerned around this idea of moving it digital, some of the guidelines and requirements that's coming in order to participate. I think it's really alarming and I think right now when we're looking at where we are as a city, where we are with our economy, I just I just can't agree with us moving in that direction. So I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my colleagues as well as the other thirteen members of council who decided to sign on to that letter. I also want to take a moment to say thank you. About two weeks ago, a high school sports season ended and there was only a high school sports season because of this council body right here. And while we are in the midst of a number of pandemics, including this gun violence crisis that that we're trying to fight on a daily basis, we will never know how many lives we saved by allowing them young people to participate in athletic and extracurricular activity over the last two months. We talked today about honoring West Catholic girls basketball team. Had we not put ourselves in a position for young people to participate in extracurricular activity, that institution would not have won its first state championship. Council members had to step up to the plate in order to put us in a position to work with the Health Department as well as the multiple leagues to be able to make that happen. So I want to thank you, Council President, for your leadership. I want to say a huge thank you to the Chair of our Education Committee, Councilmember Maria Keone Sanchez, as well as my colleague, Councilmember Mark Squilla, who even had Ann from his staff serve on the Oversight Committee along with members of my team to collect film to make sure that if there were any outbreaks at any time, we were able to identify what took place and be able to do the contactation. But even in the midst of thinking about that, a kid like Jimmy King, who's Ann's son, who was a senior this year, he had a phenomenal year, a year that he'll probably remember for the rest of his life. Thinking about kids like him and kids like Samir Priester, who again was a senior, whose junior year got cut off, and had we not fought for young people to participate in athletic activity, these young people would have never had an opportunity to touch high school sports again, ever. And honestly, that is something that I know I would have regretted and I know them and their parents would have regretted as well, too. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who was involved in that process because without it being a team effort led by this council body, we would not have had a winter sports season for our young people. And that's, again, something that's needed. The last thing I want to say as I close out, right now, we're trying to fight our state partners because the state is pushing to force our teachers and our young people and our families to take PSSA standardized testing. And we know that as of last night, they've backtracked and said that the testing will only take place for third through fifth graders, but we still think that's wrong. We're in the midst of a global pandemic and to put that type of pressure on young people as well as as teachers, when we all as educators know that young people learn a variety of different ways. So if you're a young person who's more of a kinesthetic learner or you need in-person learning to best maximize your intellectual ability and you've been denied that because we're in the midst of a pandemic, how can we realistically expect you to perform to the best of your ability? And so we want to continue to fight and fight and fight for our children, our families, our teachers, and all stakeholders who are involved in academic experience, our young people partaking on a daily basis, and we want to make sure that we're not putting them in a position to fail. And I believe that forcing any of our students as well as the teachers who administer standardized testing in a year like this is something that's unfair and we're going to continue to fight until none of our students are forced or our teachers are forced to participate in this level of standardized testing this academic year. Let's revisit this conversation and figure out what we can do in the fall when we are on a different side of this coronavirus pandemic. Thank you, Council President, and again, thank you to all my colleagues for your support on a number of different issues and conflicts that we have in this city.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for your continued aggressive commitment to these young people in the city of Philadelphia. It's so much needed. We really appreciate it. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Thomas, for that dedicated advocacy for young people in our city in a variety of ways. It's definitely needed and thank you for doing that through your role as a member of council. Also, I want to thank Councilmember O, also now been renamed as Deacon O, and he'll know the reference to that, for bringing up Concrete Cowboy was a phenomenal film and it really reflected the city of Philadelphia. And when you watch it, you really get the perspective of Philadelphia in that film, just like in so many ways, Do the Right Thing captures New York in that time period. I really felt Fletcher Street and Philadelphia in that film. So definitely was a great film and a great discussion on father and son bonding. So definitely a great film. I hope everyone gets a chance to see it. As I stated earlier, you know, April, April is a great month because we start to really come out of the winter into the early throes of spring and April is Autism Acceptance and Awareness Month. And some of you may be able to see my pin on my lapel. The pin is a puzzle piece which is universally internationally known as Signifying Autism. And, you know, this is a great month and it's also great here in the city of Philadelphia. And this body has been so supportive of so many things we've done regarding not only awareness but also acceptance. And to bring some of that awareness to the viewing and listening public, some people may not know that we as a city have had a long history in providing support and resources regarding autism. In nineteen fifty-five, the Center for Autism was founded here in this city as a pilot at the University of Pennsylvania. And so autism is something that people have not known about for a long time, but right here in Philadelphia, we have been doing not only advocacy and service provision for young people and also more seasoned people on the autism spectrum going back to nineteen fifty-five. And there's so many institutions in the city that provide outstanding services for families, individuals who are on the autism spectrum, from the Kenny Center for Autism at St. Joe's University, University of Pennsylvania has an autism clinic, Children's Hospital has a Center for Autism. You also have LaSalle University has a ladder family center. Also, for young people on the spectrum who want to go to college, they have options at Arcadia University and Westchester University and St. Joseph University. We have a number of outstanding developmental pediatricians in the region. And I think of the work at St. Christopher's Hospital and Children's Hospital and think of Dr. Wendy Ross, who, working with our own airport many years ago, created the Autism and Air Program, enabling young people to be able to travel, working with our Philadelphia International Airport and airlines to provide opportunities for young people to travel through flight. She's also worked with all of our major sports teams and making sure that those venues are friendly for those on autism spectrum. So the Sixers and the Flyers and the Phillies as well as the Eagles, making sure that those people who want to say fly, Eagles fly, can do that in a friendly setting at that sports venues. The Eagles have also stepped up by creating the Eagles Autism Foundation where they raised millions of dollars to help provide services and research. And we acknowledge them in the resolutions introduced today and will be passed next week regarding their work to help vaccinate those on autism spectrum as well as their caregivers at Lincoln Financial Field. And then we also have at Drexel University, the A.J. Drexel Institute, which has worked with our own Philadelphia Autism Project that this body has supported over the years. And they provided some great programs and services. And working with the Philadelphia Autism Project, they've created the Community Autism Peer Specialist Program or CAPS Program, which has become an internationally renowned program, helping those on autism spectrum to become peer supports for younger people on the autism spectrum and also earn employment. And that's been a program that, you know, the Philadelphia Autism Project and Drexel through their institute has helped work to promote and grow as well as our, you know, State Center for Autism and Mental Health Partnerships has been a strong part of that, as well as our own Community Behavioral Health and Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services. So we have a long and rich history here in the city of Philadelphia in the region of helping those on the autism spectrum. So I wanted to bring that awareness and we've got to do more in reference to acceptance. And although we've had so much progress and there's so many other programs that I did not mention, we have so much more work to do. Previously, I talked about some of the challenges that I've had and shares my personal perspectives in raising a son on the autism spectrum, a black man who's now a young adult. Some of you have seen him when he was very young to now he has got some some hair on his chin and little mustache and starting to feel his oats, so to say, as a young adult. But he is a black man on autism spectrum. And I talked about how when he was younger, you know, taking him to school or when he's at events, we used to put a card in his bookbag to let people know that, you know, my son is on autism spectrum and he can't communicate like others normally can communicate on various issues. And so now as a young adult having not necessarily a bookbag but having a wallet, but having concerns that, you know, he may not be able to communicate with those individuals as they approach him or other type of authorities type approaching. So I know for parents, especially African-American parents, you're very familiar with the talk. Some of you, and I would say for those who are not as familiar with the talk, you should Google the talk Proctor and Gamble. This is a commercial that Proctor and Gamble did a little while ago that really, to me, crystallizes what the talk is in the African-American community. And I know for those on autism spectrum, we can't really have that type of talk like other parents because of the speech and communication challenges, it makes it very difficult. So one of the fears I've often had is that as Julian becomes older and he's out and about and he's not with us, and if I've instructed him, like I did when he was younger, if someone approaches you to go into your backpack to give this card, or now being a young adult, go into your wallet to provide your wallet or this card to identify the fact that you're on the autism spectrum, we don't know what would happen as he goes into his wallet and goes into his pocket to reach out and pull out something that may be viewed and deemed as offensive or threatening. And so this is a fear and a challenge I've had as a father. I think it's a fear and challenge that many parents have had for some time, especially those who are African-American, who've had the talk with their children. And for those African-American parents that have a child on the autism spectrum, the challenge of not even be able to have that type of talk with their child. And so that fear really came home last week. As we were beginning to celebrate the Easter holiday weekend, we learned reports that two police officers were arrested, excuse me, one police officer, one former police officer were arrested last week based on an incident from August nineteenth of last year. At that time, both the individuals were police officers. They were off duty. And in the northeast section of our city, they chased a young man who had Asperger's, which is on autism spectrum, based on a belief that he was involved in some type of criminal activity. During that foot chase, he was able to call his mother and based on that call was able, mother was able to hear some of the information that transpired during the foot chase. He was beat up and assaulted.
After that incident, and they identified, and they were off-duty officers, and they identified themselves not as officers but part of Town Watch. After that situation, the Police Department started internal affairs investigation. As that started, one of the individuals retired. Internal Affairs did their investigation. And based on the information we received last week, both individuals were arrested and the other individual, who still is a police officer, is under suspension with the intent for dismissal. So when I talk about, and I've talked about this in the past, about the fears of having a child on the autism spectrum, this is the type of thing I'm talking about. These are the fears that so many parents, especially African-American parents with a child on the spectrum have. And this demonstrates how we have so much more work to do. Now, based on the fact that he was even able to call his mother during his foot chase is something that's somewhat remarkable. Something that could have happened where he was not able to do that. And it makes me think of so many countless situations in the history of this nation when people were taking justice into their own hands. And we've heard and seen the stories of so many situations when so many tragic things happened based on these type of situations. So we as a city have so much more work to do in reference to autism awareness and acceptance. We've had so many great institutions over the years that provided the ability for so many of us as parents to dream of the possibilities for our children. But at the same point, although we have these dreams of possibilities and we have the acceptance of awareness of these great possible outcomes for our children, we also have the acceptance and awareness of the dreams and fears of what happened August nineteenth happening to our children. So we still have so much more work to do. We've come so far, but we have much more work to do. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you so much. Thank you for your continued, both personal and being a strong advocate and spokesperson for this very, very important issue. Appreciate more than enough. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, I don't know if you recall, but in twenty fourteen, I created a childhood obesity program called Philly Play. Most members were involved. They were, you know, partners throughout the city and the rec department. I remember in twenty fourteen partnering with you in an event in one of your rec centers and then calling you afterwards at the end saying, I just seen two guys, two cowboys on horses coming up to the recreation center, talking to the community members, talking to the kids, engaging with them, making them feel safe. It was, well, first shockingly, right? Because I, you know, who would have, who would have, I've never seen cowboys anywhere in the city of Philadelphia, let alone North Philly, and it was incredible. I'm so glad I got to witness. And although I haven't seen the film yet, I look forward to it, but it's just one of those memories that I've had. And if I didn't witness it, you wouldn't believe it to both Philadelphians. So I'm glad that there's going to be a film talking about the concrete, you know, cowboys right here in Philadelphia and that you personally have some, you know, intimate and personal ties with them that you can relate as, you know, my one experience. I have two things that I'd like to discuss real, we'll talk about real quick. Unfortunately, it seems as of late, we're losing people who are moving on and passing away, who have made an incredible impact with Philadelphia, its members, its organizations, you know, as activists, as labor leaders. Today, you know, along with Councilmember Brooks and I believe all members of City Council, we passed a resolution acknowledging the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Philadelphia Fire Department. But I want to offer my condolences on the passing of Philadelphia Fire to the Philadelphia Fire Department and the Fireman's Hall historian, Jack Wright. Philadelphia fire personnel are Philadelphia's heroes and their services over the past hundred and fifty years make them one of the oldest municipal fire companies in the country. Fittingly, Jack Wright was one of the leaders in preserving the department's history and losing him will have a profound impact on us all. Lastly, I think a little more personal with folks in the labor community and I would imagine some on City Council, this past Sunday, April fourth, we lost an incredible labor giant, Don McGrogan. Don was such a remarkable person. He was kind. He was energetic and he was one of the hardest working guys I know. He was a labor warrior and USCW local seventeen seventy-six. I've worked with him over the past twenty years. I've worked with him side by side with the AFL-CIO's Labor to Labor Program and Labor to Neighbor Program. He's somebody who not only walked the walk, but he walked the streets. He knocked on doors. He was in our stores that USCW represented, represented. He was just a gentle giant. He was an incredible person who was inviting. He was warm. People felt comfortable with him. He was an incredible activist in addition to a labor leader. He was only sixty-two when he passed away. He was an adored father and friend. He was a talented banjo player with Aqua String Band. Uh, he lived in my district and we have uh up in, you know, Mayfair-Holmesburg, we have a a historic Thanksgiving Day Parade. And every Thanksgiving Day Parade that I marched in, I would always be looking for him because him and his family were out there celebrating community and enjoying uh who we are as as Philadelphia. So next week, I'm going to be introducing a resolution in his honor and his family's honor uh and uh the USCW members uh in their honor. And I welcome all uh cosponsors for, you know, from uh our member of council. So my condolences out to uh to his family and to the membership of USCW. Thank you for your time, Council President.
Thank you, family. Parts of prayers out to their family members. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, recently, many Philadelphians celebrated Passover, Easter, and uh soon uh the month of Ramadan. And maybe because of those spiritual holidays, I want to cite Matthew twenty-five where it says, "For I was hungry and you fed me. I was thirsty and you gave me drink. I was a stranger in a strange land and you invited me in. I was sick and you cared for me." But the most powerful part of this uh sounds is, they say, "I was in prison and you visited." I say that because as Chair of Public Safety, um, and uh all of the members on the Public Safety Committee, particularly um Councilwoman Brooks and Councilwoman Gimm, who are often considered short in height, let me tell you, they are tall in stature. Uh, we went up to the prisons uh last Thursday. And um I wasn't escorting them, they were escorting me. Uh, they walked through the facility with power um and strength of our council uh and went into the various pods where eighteen-year-olds to twenty-seven-year-olds, predominantly people of color, uh were occupying um in in a, in an environment that was held together, in my opinion, by bubble gum, duct tape, and piano wire. It is very tentative. But I've met some of the most courageous correctional officers you will ever meet, many of whom, Mr. President, were female. We, during the budget process, have to pay attention to what's going on up on State Road. We have a courageous commissioner who's holding those things together. We walked into places, Mr. President, where um all I can say is it was wasted talent. Idle minds create the doubles workshop and it was on full display where guards, in my opinion, correctional officers, pardon me, were not safe. The inmates that were there were not safe. Um, and I would say to you that um this situation was exacerbated because of COVID and because of the fact that out of the forty-seven hundred inmates there, the good news is many of them are getting vaccinated along with the correctional officers. The bad news is many of them refused to take the shots. Because of that, you have high degrees of outages based on those correctional officers, which endanger those who come to work and have to stand their posts. I want you to know that out of the eighteen hundred or so correctional officers, there are three hundred and thirty vacancies. Starting salary, there is forty-four thousand a year. So if somebody is looking for a job, well, there you go. Uh, and those correctional officers are an important part of keeping us all safe. I need not point to you what happened um to the inmate that was released and then murdered on the, on the, on the prison grounds. But when someone decides that I'm going to be bold enough to go right up in a prison and assassinate someone, none of us, none of us, none of us, not the correctional officers, not the inmates that are housed there, are safe. So I just want to thank um my colleagues um that that braved it. Brooks and um Gimm were something else to see. But I would encourage all of my colleagues to take that visit. I can't write a report or give a memo that can adequately describe what we experienced. Um, I am looking forward to the prison commissioners' after-action report and corrective steps to make us all safer as Philadelphians. But I want again, thank all my members, including um Majority Leader Parker, who has expressed great concern about what's going on and say that during this budget process, to remember Matthew twenty-five and as we do our work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Thank you for your continued presence in a very important public safety issue. Um, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and I want to also thank my colleagues for their work and diligence on this very important issue uh around what's happening and uh particularly Councilwoman Jones, you as the Chair of Public Safety have been doing uh a phenomenal job uh in terms of keeping the issues out there. I know that you, Councilwoman Kenyatta Johnson, uh, you know, the 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 uh great duo that you are, are seen uh as uh really keeping the issue in the front. Um, right now, unfortunately, it's not like it would be in the front anyway um because there's just so much happening in the city. But I I just wanted to say thank you uh for all that you're doing. And um, you know, listen, none of us is perfect, but we all work really hard to try to address the issues in the city of Philadelphia. Uh, one of the things that I just saw is a um post on social media uh which uh states that after ten murders since Monday and more shooting deaths of women and juveniles, that federal law enforcement based in Philadelphia uh will be announcing tomorrow morning a federal initiative to combat violence in Philadelphia. And that includes uh the U.S. Attorney's Office, that includes um our own Police Commissioner, Daniel Outlaw. Uh, it also includes, it looks like the FBI and the ATF. I don't have additional details on that, but I just saw a post uh come across. And uh, listen, we can use all the help that we can get in our neighborhood. So um I'm very interested to hear what else is going to be uh said and how that's going to work uh here for the citizens of the city of Philadelphia. Um, today I wanted to just mention that uh this past Tuesday, April sixth, was National Library Workers' Day. First, I want to acknowledge the concerned Black workers of the Free Library of Philadelphia, who have organized and fought racial discrimination, inequality, and mistreatment in our library system for many years. A few weeks ago, a diversity and inclusion training event for the Free Library of Philadelphia staff took place and the presenter discouraged over two hundred participants from using the terms white supremacy, systemic racism, and white privilege because they were overused, quote unquote, overused, and supposedly unnecessary to finding solutions. The presenter also referred to white privilege as one of the other myths out there, therefore criticizing its use. This type of language denies the Black experience and the discrimination and biases that Black workers endure every day. And these statements are absolutely unacceptable. Events and messaging like this does not move our library system towards racial justice. White supremacy, systemic racism, and white privilege are very real and prevalent in our world today. And I would like to show my support to the Black library workers who have had to suffer through this event. As we celebrate National Library Workers' Day, I am again uplifting the concerned Black workers' demand for equitable pay and fair treatment. I also wanted to just take a moment and talk about International Transgender Day of Visibility. And this past Wednesday, or the Wednesday before pass, uh which was March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, was International Transgender Day of Visibility. This day celebrates the transgender community by educating, spreading awareness, and changing biases about what it means to be trans and gender nonconforming. In Philadelphia and many cities across the country, there is an epidemic of violence against trans people. We have lost many trans people in our own city to anti-LGBTQ homicides, such as Dominique Remy Fells, Mia Green, and Tatiana Hall. Trans people also experience higher unemployment, homelessness, attempted suicide, and disenfranchisement rates, and are less likely to seek medical attention out of fear of discrimination. LGBTQ youth of color are overrepresented in child welfare, juvenile justice systems, and are likely to report harassment and are unlikely to report harassment, physical assault, or sexual violence in schools by school staff. A day of visibility for most trans community is is important because it acknowledges the strength, resilience, and unique characters of trans people and accepts individuals as they are. I would like to recognize Selina Morrison, the Executive Director of our Office of LGBT Affairs, who was likely the first open trans person to lead a city office, which makes a major step, or marks a major step for Philadelphia. I also wanted to recognize Dr. Rachel Levine, the former head of the Pennsylvania Department of Health, who was confirmed to be the Assistant Secretary of Health for the Biden Administration. This is another huge step for the LGBTQ community as Dr. Levine is now the highest-ranked trans professional to serve in the federal government. Every day, we must continue to raise awareness of the challenges trans and non-gender conforming people face, while we also celebrate the strength and perseverance of the trans community. And that being said, I want to thank you, Mr. President, for the latitude in uh delivering today's speeches for the majority. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Appreciate you, appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. Um, I wanted to thank my colleagues uh for um joining together a couple of weeks ago and sending a letter over to the municipal courts regarding the uh City Council's um eviction diversion program. Um, about a year ago, many of us took a big leap of faith um on really making a commitment to housing as a human right. At the start of the pandemic, there was a tremendous amount of uncertainty. There wasn't uh money that was available for um for keeping people housed. Um, I think when we talked about whether it was possible for folks to start paying people's rent, uh, we initially got scoffed at by a number of different uh people um around uh in that area. And we made a commitment nonetheless um in a city that ranks the fourth highest in the nation in terms of eviction filings. A city that routinely processes about twenty thousand evictions a year, seventy-four percent of whom target a Black renter, seventy percent of which target a woman, uh, half of which target a caregiver of a dependent. Um, we knew that evictions uh were the, you know, needed to be put on pause and that we need to find a better way. And uh this council uh made a bold step by uh working together to pass the Emergency Housing Protections Act. We established a pre-filing diversion program with very little money. Um, and the stalwart commitment of a number of city agencies, especially our housing counselors, who actually stepped forward to do the mediation work, even when there wasn't a guarantee of a reimbursement for their work. That is pretty extraordinary. As a result, um, you know, we piloted also a rent assist program uh that started off with ten million dollars that the city was able to scrape together. Um, that became, you know, twenty-eight million dollars um by June, thanks to the work of the state. Um, City Council had to put in an additional eight million dollars to make that state program work. But by the end of the year, we had really shown that we can turn things around. And at the core of it was the was the diversion program, really. It allowed renters and landlords to sit down together before you file for an eviction and talk things through, to explore what the options were. And when we had rent assistance money, when we had trained housing counselors, it turns out that an overwhelming number, we did probably twenty-five hundred mediations between September uh through February, um ninety percent of them found a resolution other than an eviction. And that's pretty incredible. By the end of the year, Philadelphia become the face on the front page of the New York Times about a city that was working overtime to get money out to landlords and tenants and to keep people housed. In January, the state um passed, thanks to the Federal Relief Act last year, um, had a a hundred million, five hundred million dollars statewide. A hundred million of that comes to Philadelphia. All of us have been spreading around the benefits of of Phase Four of Rent Assist. Um, the Biden Rescue Plan with twenty-seven and a half billion dollars devoted to rent assistance could likely double that. What that means is is that we may not have to see a poverty-based eviction here in the city of Philadelphia. Um, but this really relied on the courts being a partner on this. And um, you know, to be clear, uh while we have had a historic uh mortgage foreclosure diversion program that made Philadelphia uh a model for the nation, thank you so much to Councilwoman Jones, to Judge Annette Rizzo at the time at the municipal courts, um and many others uh who had a role to play on it. We showed that diversion can really make a difference. The question was, could we also do it around evictions? Um, and last week, thanks to a letter that was signed by an overwhelming majority of City Council, an appeal to the courts, the courts issued a formal order, temporary for right now, but we hope will move towards a permanent basis, that eviction diversion is mandatory. That means that you cannot actually file for an eviction until you first apply for rent assistance um or and you seek mediation through the diversion program. This is obviously for non-payment of rent. Um, and this is really transformative. By having the courts recognize the fact that mediation and um negotiation, a contact between two parties, can actually result in better outcomes. It means that we don't have to necessarily go back to the way things were. In a city that once did twenty thousand evictions, we held it down below five thousand evictions in twenty twenty. We also made sure that landlords got paid over sixty million dollars in rent checks from as little as a several hundred dollars out to thousands of dollars in rent checks. Went out to pay people's back rent, to pay people's current rent, and to pay rent going forward. There is a different path from what we have chosen, and we don't have to stick with the old ways. It is also possible that evictions are a driver of poverty, not merely a consequence of it. So when we keep people housed, when we don't throw people out onto the streets, when we keep young kids stable in schools and our most needy individuals um just a little bit more stable for a period of time, we have a chance to see our way through to the other side. And that's in part why I think, you know, this conversation that we're going to have about the city budget matters. There are lots of questions that are before us right now. Questions about whether, you know, we are going to move forward boldly on a path to address gun violence in our city. When we have hearing after hearing that clearly shows that people are struggling, young people are struggling, just to even access basic services around trauma therapy and supports, that we need supports within our communities. We've been told over and over again, we need extended programming, outreach to communities, um, especially for young people who are overwhelmingly impacted by gun violence, Black and Brown youth in particular. Um, and that a decade ago, when the last time we saw four hundred shootings in our city in two thousand and six, what did we do back then? We we cut back on schools, we closed many of them down. Services were were cut back in an austerity agenda. We can't pursue that agenda again. Here, in the middle of a pandemic, we cannot pursue an austerity agenda. It just does not make sense at this point in time. And if an austerity agenda pits our people against tax cuts for extremely, you know, like high-end corporations or income taxes, when corporate income taxes are at the lowest point that they've been in decades, then we have to ask ourselves whether all the promises, all the hearings that we've made, matter. And so we've got a mission, I know this is going to be a conversation. I think we've shown transformative things that we can do when we help people stay housed, when we fund young people's schools, when we give them the programs that they need to survive, when we deal with when we deal with people's trauma and their therapy, and we remind ourselves that at the core of a prosperous economy is a healthy individual. It's a healthy neighborhood. It's a supported place. That too is a healthy business environment. A strong city, healthy people, an educated populace is a healthy business environment. There isn't one definition to it. I look forward to that conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. For your continued hard work. It appears that concludes the speeches on behalf of the minority and the majority. Through that, I would like to recognize Councilman Jones for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that City Council stand adjourned until Thursday, April 15th, 2021, at 10:00 a.m.
Second.
Thank you. It is moved to second that Council stand adjourned until Thursday, April 15th, 2021, 10:00 a.m. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, as have motion carries. Thank you all very much, and please be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.